Bring this, um, Special Affairs Committee meeting to order. Roll call, ma'am, sir, please.
Oh, boy, God.
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Warrick?
Present.
Thank you. Are there any requests for changes and additions to the agenda? Ms. Fields?
I'd like a chance to make some referrals. Uh, I guess I can do it under additional council discussion.
Okay. Any further, um, okay? Well, if there's no change.
Madam Chair, we would offer the, I would ask that we always offer the public a chance to chime in in these meetings, and I would say we do that prior to executive session.
Sounds good. So, any other changes? So, we, uh, the only change we have is on, there's a walk-on. Do, we'll get, we'll get to that, yeah. Um, so, all in favor of the changes, which is simply to add public speaking? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, is there anyone here at the public, of the public that would like to speak? Mr. R.L. Mitchell?
Yes, I'd like to speak on sanitation in this thing. Last Friday, we was in here and Janelle acted like she had it. Uh, here she fit because I was eating in it. It was right before the eating in the council. She said, "I wasn't supposed to eat in here." And the lady called herself taking up for me. I didn't know it was that bad, Janelle, that she was looking at me, not getting her hand on the table. And then she backed off, but I just pushed the, and called the, and called it the one that Mays always talk about. I said, "The word, whack." Then Janelle got back in my, I mean, well, she act like I'm snogger or something. Is it, is I'm still legit to be in there? But, you see, they gave me some meat in here. That's all I'm saying.
Would anyone else like to address the, um, Mr. Woodson? Will you say your name for the, um?
Arthur Woodson, uh, today, uh, we, uh, went over to a house, uh, where they had a sewer backed up and service lines. They didn't know if it was the service lines. The city was saying it was the contractor. The contractor said it was the city. Well, W.T. Stevens came out Friday to try to fix it or find out what was going on. The city didn't show up. So, everybody said, "All right, we're gonna meet up Monday and see what's going on." So, W.T. Stevens dug it up, and we saw that it wasn't a sewer. But the city didn't want to stay there to find out and, and, and figure out why were, why was the sewer backing up? So, the city, I mean, it's not the only one. So, Rob Benesik needs to find out what's going on. Why won't the city stay and figure out what's going on with these sewers instead of jumping in their cars five minutes later, taking off without figuring out if it's the city, if it's on the city's side or the, uh, contract? Because right now, everybody thinking that it's the contractors that's messing up, and the city isn't staying out there to figure out who, who, who's at fault. And they done brought Rodereruder and a private plumber in, and the plumber says all the way out to pass the curb paths. So, that's the city part. And they're not staying out there to find out, and it's causing a lot of havoc in the community. Because the community pointing the finger at the contractor, the contractor pointing the finger at the city. So, the people get in there and don't nobody know what's going on. So, you know, can you speak to the city about, you know, going out when the people are, the citizens are having an issue with their sewer, that the city goes out there with the contractor to figure out what the issue is and not leaving, lingering out there for the residents to have to keep on paying on their partner?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
I would. Uh, I'm Jeff Shelley, resident of Flint, Michigan. Just got a couple of issues here. First one's insurance, car and home. And in the last few years, the, the crime in Flint has gone down. Insurance rate has not gone down. With the approval of Dr. uh, Karen Weaver and the help of Timothy Johnson and Councilman Maurice Davis, we are going to get the stats and prove the Michigan insurance where the crime ha- crime has gone down and demand the rates go down for the city of Flint by zip code. We're also asking for a refund for the previous years which show crime decreasing and the rates remain high. Uh, we will, we will give them a reasonable amount of time to practice and then go to court. So, we're gonna work on the insurance rates. By stats from the police station, they're gonna provide us with certified stats, and we're gonna take the insurance for Michigan. And Maurice Davis is heading that up for us. Thank you, Maurice. Second one is, uh, evictions in Flint. In Flint, evictions are preceded, the change, the sheriff changed the locks and tenants' belongings go off the curb. Then people go through the belongings and they leave a mess. After eviction notice has been served, if the tenants do not move their belongings, they need to change the progress regarding how those possessions are handled. Rather than putting the tenants' belongings to the street, the sheriff's department should move the possession to a storage facility. Tenant should then be required to pay for the storage and allow them, to allow them for their, and take them, take up their belongings. The tenants cannot move their, uh, their belongings immediately. Uh, they can arrange with storage facility for longer storage. They can pay for an extra month or so. Okay? Uh, so, and then, uh, if they don't pick up their belongings within three days or a set time, agree the timeframe, storage facility should be allowed to sell it, you know? They'll sell it from storage facility instead of being set out on the curb. I asked the city council to add disordinance to the city charter to cover the concern. It would benefit both the tenants, landlords, and the city. A, the tenants, give them a law, uh, give them, uh, time to find another home and not have other positions distributed and taken away. Let me, the landlords, uh, Maurice is pointing out the dumping on North Side and some of that from landlords, you know? And third, they cut down on blight and trap in the neighborhoods. I'd like to give this to my, uh, councilperson.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Council has two minutes. Ms., um, yeah, Ms. Fields and anyone else that, if you wanted to do the two minutes?
Um, I'd like to say to Councilman Davis and Mr. Shelley that, um, the Eastside Coalition has been working for a while now on trying to get our three legislators together for a nighttime town hall meeting about insurance, the cost of insurance here in Flint, because the rates are due to Michigan laws, so state laws. That's why we're being, um, charged so high. So, when we get a potential date, we're, we're having trouble getting legislators that are, that insurance is their specialty per se, that know a lot about it, but they're going to reach out to some of their colleagues because we've been informed there is a committee at the state level, um, that deals with insurance. So, we're going to try to get the appropriate people to a town hall meeting, invite anyone in the city who wants to come to that, I just, to discuss it because the insurance rates are ridiculous in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we'll let you know, and, and Councilman Davis, I will get with you especially when that is, uh, we know a date for that.
Anyone else like to address the public? Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Shelley, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention today. And because redlining on the North End is a real issue, even though it's a state legislative, but certain sides of town pay more insurance than others. And this redlining must cease, so whatever, and I, I, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Fields, for having that conversation as well. But we clearly need to do something about redlining in poor neighborhoods. Blighted, white, black, blue, green. And as well as that dumping is, 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 is just through the roof right now in front of Eagles Nest. Nice is Mr. Flynn and, and that whole family over there at Eagles Nest, they did a landlord dump right in front of there. I just talked to the constituent and complaint a few seconds ago. I mean, they throws trash, it's blowing all over to the school and everywhere. Just throw the stuff out the house. Something gotta be done by ordinance. And I will say this, and this ain't the body or the place for it but come committee. I would like to look into, that a councilperson be certified enough to put the tickets on them, on that blight, since the black department don't do it, and put a ticket on them houses so it can be done, because that's what's gonna keep us in these chairs or get you out of these chairs. Residents don't think we doing nothing when you turn them in. But I could just sign this document here, just like a ticket writer, and, and ticket that blight. And then give them so much, and then we put more fees on curbside dumping from landlords. And we will address that, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to address the public?
I just wanna, um, piggyback off of what Councilman Davis just said, and I just wanna, uh, let you guys know and ask you, are you guys aware that we do have neighborhood safety officers, um, for each ward? So, you might wanna contact your neighborhood, um, safety officer. I found that out today, and I was very pleased, and I will be contacting mine, and I did call in a lot of, um, areas today to the, um, blight office of different, um, dumping areas in the fifth ward. So, I was pleased to find out that I do have a neighborhood safety officer, and I'll be calling him to work closely with him to get the fifth ward cleaned up.
Anyone else want to address the public?
I've got one more thing.
We, the, yeah, no, okay, time is up. Um, I just want to, oh, Mr. Mays, for him.
Yeah, um, Ariel, I've seen council people eat in council meetings. I eat if I need be. You welcome to eat in a council meeting. I don't think there's no rules against it.
Thanks, sir. Just guess you heard that, Janelle.
Yeah, Ariel, let me speak. So, you know, just clean up behind ourselves. But, yeah, you can eat. Um, with Mr. Woodson, I get a lot of calls about sewers. And during the, um, pipe replacement program, sewer problems don't stop. Some of them could be related to contractors, um, a person with a house. I've had people call Rodereruder, we track it down. I deal with them on each individual case. Uh, prior when AECOM and the inspectors and different people was here, we was running sewers, I mean, cameras through sewers. The problems that's going on right now, I fought the majority of this council for not keeping the inspectors and management team going with cameras and tablets and communications. Our code was such contracted out to AECOM, and that was over thirty-some people. So, we, I know the problems. I'm familiar with the sewer issues and all. We've even had a particular internal complaint dealing with a sewer. Lady came here, Commercial Property Angela. I'm trying to follow up on some of that stuff too. So, we're very familiar. Anybody in the first ward who have a problem with anything, um, call me. And the number, uh, people know it, they call me. But if, I get calls from all wards, nine-two-two-four-eight-six-zero. That's my cell, not my just calls from all wards. The council office is seven-six-six-seven-four-one-eight. Call and call your councilperson. Mr. Shelley, Floyd Clark probably was the best state rep that high-profile fought redlining and, um, insurance issues. Now, we got folks term limited out. I don't know which state reps and senators go to Lansing for. I've said if I run, um, with Neely being term limited out, I'll champion the cause of, um, insurance rates on the state level if I have to stand on my head on the floor in order to get attention. There's nothing wrong with court. I'll do it in any arena. If people don't listen, take them to court. It's kinda illegal, it's kind of, um, sometimes it's racial. So, I have no problem with anybody who wanna champion the cause, but they can fix it on the state level.
Thank you. Um, so, did anyone else, is there anyone else here that would like to address the council? Okay. So, according to the agenda, the next item is, uh, it says executive session. The Flint City Council requests an executive session for the purpose of discussing Eric Mays versus the Flint City Council, Circuit Court Case Number one-nine-dash-one-one-two-four-seven-five-dash-CZ. Um, Ms. Fields?
Yeah, I requested this one, um, to discuss the amended complaint that was filed, um, late last week. And since having an open meeting would have additional effect, I would request that we have a, we have a closed session in regards to the amended complaint, um, Mays versus, uh, Fields, Werving, uh, Briggs, Galloway, let's see, who else? Fields, um, Werving, Briggs, and Galloway, uh, Councilman Winfrey, Councilman Guerra, uh, individually and in official capacity. So, since having an open meeting would have additional effect, I would ask that we would have a closed session in regards to the amended complaint. Your motion?
I move that we move into executive session for the reasons just stated by the attorney.
Mr. Guerra? Hold a second, that will just be moved a second. It is their discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I, um, I might vote in favor, I might abstain. I won't be voting no on this executive session, but as a member of this council and listening to the public discussion, um, last week as it relates to attorneys, time ain't standing still. And so, we ain't standing still, and I'm glad that, um, it looked like y'all might go in executive session to address the amended complaints, which is a key component. Um, we'll see what this council and the individual members does and when they retain a lawyer because I'm ready to communicate with somebody, or if not, I'm sure time will handle it all.
Is there any further discussion, Ms. Fields?
Yes, I would request that the city attorney check into, I believe it's a conflict of interest for Mr. Mays to even vote on this executive session, much less discuss it, since he is the party that is suing us.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mr. Briggs?
Uh, since the city council as a whole is no longer mentioned, and it's six people, then I think the two people that aren't mentioned, which would be Councilpersons Davis and Carter, should not be in the executive session.
Is that it?
That's it.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Ms. Fields can have her so-called request. Um, as long as I sit here, I will vote yes, no, or abstain if I choose. That ain't even, anybody with just good common knowledge should know that can happen. As far as, um, Mr. Davis and Ms. Winfrey Carter, I'll let them fight their own fights as far as what they do with their elected council seats in an executive session. And so, I continue to listen to a lot of the dialogue that's going on, even on the discussion to go into executive session. Um, I know a lot of folks, and, well, I ain't gonna say a lot, but one in particular in the fourth ward don't want me to exercise my right to vote yes, no, or abstain, they rather that I wasn't elected. And I'm used to that. And, um, so, I would, um, encourage my colleagues to do what they think they should do in their elected seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cause I'm gonna do what I got.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Do we know who is supposed to vote yes or no, or?
We do. We're, we're, this is a vote, you just wanna take roll call for everybody. Let them, yeah? Please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warrick?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Werving?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no.
So, we are going into executive session. One-three-one, one-nine-zero-one-three-four to council. Is the motion on the floor, Mr. Briggs, removed consecutive? Is there any discussion?
If we could hesitate till I can get my agenda out.
Is there anybody else that has any discussion? No? Um...
Okay, what was moved to council?
The three resolutions.
This is a contract for Habitat for Humanity, the block grant money for the fire fund. But is that them fire trucks? Um, last we was here, Madam Chair threw you to Ms., um, Wilcox, when Ms. Fields finished talking.
Ms. Fields? Miss, he has a question for Ms. Wilcox.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I like public meetings. I don't know what's, uh, what's going on there. I'm more public. Ms. Fields, I mean, Ms. Wilcox, through you, the chairperson, to Ms. Wilcox. Last we was here on this subject of this unspent, unspent community development, block grant money, I was asking some specific questions about the spending. And, um, I had already had a long day, and then you sit down in the middle of me asking questions. I was offended by that. I left here, and that's where the conversation stopped. I think it's important that we give respect, uh, ask people to sit at the table, people stand so it can be heard. I don't know what that miscommunication was, but it happened when you said unqualified police cops. And I said, is there any, I was starting to say, is there any qualified? You talked about capital improvements. They als, you also talked about this being a budget item in the next fiscal year. If I'm understanding it right, this is for nine-hundred thousand, and it's two fire vehicles. Where I was here, that I wanted to look at maybe one vehicle, and what else could we spend unbl, unspent block grant money on? That's been an issue. I've always said when there's some unspent block grant money, I wanna know about it before it's reallocated. That ain't happened, I don't think, in this case. So, nine-hundred thousand of unspent block grant money, who determine what it can be spent for and who put it in what categories? Can you let me know that?
Sure. The, I think the word I used was ineligible.
Yeah.
You asked the question about police vehicles, and police vehicles are ineligible, just to clarify that.
All police vehicles.
Police vehicles are, yes.
But fire trucks are eligible.
Correct.
What's the difference?
Um, fire trucks are eligible under a category of activity called facility improvements, and there's a specific category called, uh, fire protection equipment that is eligible for, um, under facility improvements. There's no similar category for police vehicles.
Who puts those categories on unspent block grant money? Was it unspent in those categories, or was it unspent in general and we can categorize?
It was unspent, there's two categories of unspent or uncommitted dollars. One is public service and the other is general uncommitted. So, we had, um, primarily general uncommitted.
How much in general uncommitted?
I think I said about one-point-one million.
Okay. And of the one-point-one million of uncommitted, if we do this deal, how much is left?
I think there's a little bit over a hundred and, and I'm, I'm speaking from just general dollars right now. I think there's about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
So, I, I, I'm doing arithmetic. This is nine-hundred thousand. You said the general unspent was one-point what?
I think it's approximately one-point-one.
One-point-one. Okay. So, of the, if y'all didn't come up with two fire trucks, and it is two fire trucks, correct?
Correct.
If y'all didn't come up with two fire trucks, there's other things that this money could go to.
There are other things that this money, um, could go to and is actually being, um, reprogrammed to. We went through a process.
You're talking about the remaining two-hundred thousand?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm talking about the whole one-point-one or two million. Um, because I ain't decided that I wanna vote on this this way yet. Um, we just did a million or more cash for a fire truck. Um, I'm hearing what the chief said about fire trucks, and I heard what was said about the upcoming budget. So, I'm kinda thinking if I was to compromise, I might do one fire truck now and another one in the upcoming budget depending on what I look at this unspent money for. Can we get an understanding from this point on? Before y'all reprogram money, can you bring us the unspent money and tell us what it can be or you plan to do it for before it gets to this point? That's what the understanding I thought we had. It didn't happen this time.
So, we actually went through a reprogramming process where we released an RFP, um, for funds and requested applications from organizations. One of the primary, um, category, or one of the primary requirements was we were looking for dollars that could be spent relatively quickly because we have a need to spend, um, a large amount of funds, and I think this came up at a council meeting a few weeks ago. We have a need to spend a large amount of funds before May second. And so, part of the criteria for the RFP was looking for agencies or organizations that could spend their money very quickly, so...
We didn't have to do RFP, did we? We could've just reprogrammed.
We do do an RFP now.
We didn't have to do.
According to the ordinance that was adopted, um, by this body, the CWAC is responsible for, um, reviewing and making recommendations on all, uh, CDBG funds, including reprogram.
Including unspent and reprogrammed. So, the ordinance that we just recently... So the ordinance that we just recently put into place makes it where you must do a RFP?
It requires that the CWAC review um, requests for funding.
Right, but that don't require RFP.
Well, we have to go through some process in order to do.
Yeah, you could do a public notice, couldn't you?
Well, I mean, this is a public notice. We did do, the RFP is a public notice.
And what, that's a form of a public notice. There's other forms of public notice. Would that be a fair statement?
Correct.
And with that other form of public notice, people who know could come before the citywide advisory council. And regardless of what the citywide revised advisory council recommend, it ends up here for final decision. That's a fair statement.
Right.
And it's here now.
Right.
I'm on, um, yeah, I might pick up on some more of this when it get out on the floor. But for the sake of time, right now, because the committees broke down, some folks was gone. Um, you sit down on there, I didn't really like that, but I'm sure I can get over it. It was a long day. And so um, I'll continue this type of communications. I'm not sure what I'm gonna do with this yet. Um, technically, I would've liked to have more discussion in committee. I might end up making a motion and see where it goes to send it back. I don't spend a million dollars of unspent block grant money too fast. Cause I know a lot of people who could use help. Thank you.
Ms. Fields?
Okay, I just wanna point out to my colleagues that the idea behind, first of all, the fire trucks, it was far more than just last month, we've talked about this. I know that um, Chief Barton has been before us, we've been talking about this actually for a long time. And one of the reasons why this was available to us as a medium to use it, to spend down the money, is because they went through the whole process of bids, which takes a long time. They issued an RFP, they bid out the vehicles, that, you know, this is a long process. And I keep bringing up, you know, May second. You know, we have to spend the money by May second, or lose it. So, all of these vehicles have gone through the uh, correct process. That means that HUD won't disallow the money, once we spend it, we've done it correctly. Anything else we wanna give money for? Once again, thank you for pointing out that all see, all um, block grant funds have to go before citywide advisory council now, for review and for recommendation. And that's something we all worked really hard on, to make sure that our citizens have input into how their money is spent. It's not our money, it's their money. And the various activities that it can be spent on, you have to think about it. Could we buy more equipment? Well, no, unfortunately, um, and I actually talked with Ms. Wilcox about some of this. Um, she pointed out that it's very rare that you can actually buy equipment with CDBG. Basically, you can do some long-term leases, maybe. So um, and that's a whole other process of getting quotes on those. But it's not like an organization, like you could get a contract, give them the money, they could do X amount of activities in the space of, what, less than a month? And spend that money. This is our best option for spending down that sum of money. And in fact, HUD actually told me, and maybe it's, it's changed then, because maybe they've been able to draw down more money. But um, a couple of weeks ago, HUD said we had one point eight million that we had to make for our timeliness. And they're different categories, like the general or whatever, I guess. But um, you know, being able to, to do nine hundred thousand of it right now, in one lap, for something the city really desperately needs, is I think, an extremely um, good option for us. And I'm sure Ms. Wilcox has been working very hard to find other, other ways, other projects, other something, so that we don't lose any of the money that we have. And I do hope that we get to the point someday, I don't know, it's never happened since I've been here, but, or involved in the process, that we get ahead of the curve. So we're not always doing everything at the last minute, hurry, hurry, rush, rush, you've gotta do this. Um, because of some timeline or date coming up. But hopefully, now that we have citywide in place, you know, we're gonna get ahead of the curve, and we won't end up with this uh, rush to make this decision, or rush to make projects that we have to have. But these fire trucks, there's a real reason for this to be on the agenda. And hopefully, my colleagues will agree, this is something we definitely need to approve.
Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I hope that this passes. I know the fire trucks that we have now are definitely in some rough shape. If I remember correctly, these two fire trucks are being replaced, the ones that are there now. They don't even start some of the times. Uh, I think you said, Chief, you could clarify that one of them has a stop sign at the floorboard?
Stop sign in the floor, cause the floor has rusted out.
Yeah. Yeah, and we definitely need vehicles that are gonna be able to service us, also this, and to the city, and plant anybody in the city. Uh, and with this being grant block money that does expire, I'd like to see it used now on proper things, so hopefully it passes.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Mr. Briggs?
Ergo, the resolution. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of sending this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, any extension? Move to council.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Fields?
I would like to move to postpone one eight zero six two seven. I think there's still council people who have questions about this. I would like to move it actually back to committee.
Um, Ms. Worthing?
I second that. There's a motion to uh, move this back to committee. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. May?
Yeah, this property is ready to go. We've held Jefferson School for three years, we've held the other ones two years back, and now, and so we ran, we run a risk. The two people who just motioned to send this back to committee, Ms. Fields and Ms. Worthing, they didn't vote to do it in the first place. Ms. Galloway, you didn't vote to do it in the first place. Those are the no votes for this land bank property. These are people's property that they living in. All we gotta do, Pam, is sign a quick claim deed and give it back to them, and we out of liability. We set eighty thousand dollars in a pot for these houses, in case something went wrong. We put five thousand dollars worth of insurance. The people making the motion to postpone this back to committee said it would fail. Said it wouldn't work, some of them. Questioned it, voted no. Brought the land bank over and the treasurer not to do it. We put together five votes by the hair of our chinny chin chin, and we got it passed. It's time to get these votes, these houses. And the mayor agreed, I agreed. I don't want them held up. Back to committee. Ms. Fields, this stuff been sitting in committee for months. Ms. Galloway's been sitting in committee for months. I've been running point. Ain't nobody sat in committee and discussed nothing for months, Mr. Doom. For months. Now it's passed, ready to move, the no people wanna vote. We might have five votes, we might not. My phones ain't run once. I won't talk to but one of them at a time, but ain't none of them call. I said "now" on purpose, I didn't say "none", I said "now". Sometime you had to talk like that. Now, I'll be voting to get these people their houses back. And I'll be voting to move this forward, so I wanna clear out the inventory. Fifteen properties. Nine to ten of them is occupied. Five of them will remain with the city till we can sort out what to do with unoccupied. This is for nine to ten occupied houses. The city attorney's office, economic development, Mill House, Lynette, and myself, assigned by council. We done knocked on doors, talked to people, then got some water bills paid, because that was part of the criteria. Thousand dollars worth of water bill payments at one house. This stuff is ready to go. I'll through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Fields, what's your question?
Mr. May? You can continue.
I just did. I said through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Fields, what's your question?
Ms. Fields, are you looking to answer him?
No, I'm not looking to answer him.
Well, if she don't wanna answer and get questions answered, then it's just a postponement installment. It ain't no questions. I'm hoping five of us vote to get these people these houses. Now, if the majority of this council, did she say something?
She said her questions are not for you, Mr. May.
Okay, but a program was invented and sponsored by me. She can hate that. Let me say this. If the majority of the council vote to hold this up, and we kept some liability, then let Ms. Fields and others take responsibility. I won't take responsibility. It's ready to go. We got a policy. Ask any specific question on the policy before you. And if some legitimate come up, we send it back to committee. But short of any questions on this policy put before us, let's not just politic this. Let's move it, let us hand these people their houses back. We go from fifteen or sixteen to five. Let's not carry this liability. And not only the liability, these people gonna get their houses.
Any further discussion?
I have a question for the attorney.
No, we already got it. Get ready to transfer, it'll be.
Just so you know, Ms. Wheeler, I, um, my question, I did have questions, but it was, it was originally postponed, and the meeting kinda went a different way. But there's, there's this, um, that we keep saying that we're gonna quick claim these deeds to, to the people that are in the houses. What does that quick deed look like? How is the price associated with it? Well, quick deed comes with a price normally. Like, how much do they pay to get the quick deed?
I think that's part of what we're, what we're gonna determine.
Right, and it's, and, and so, that, and, and so, just for me, I'm, I'm not speaking to my colleagues, um.
But the, the point is for us not to keep the house and take it off of the city's roll, so we're not liable.
Right, but if we, if we're, if we're taking it off the city's roll, that means that we should have a value before. If it's this dollar, it doesn't make sense. I will say that my concerns, um, no, I didn't start researching it, because I wasn't one of the original ones. But eventually, when this policy came before me, and finally there was something in writing, although we've held these houses since seventeen, there wasn't paper. And when there was paper, I did try to take the opportunity um, to ask some questions. And if anybody goes back to the meeting, it was about a month ago, and Councilman May, yielded the floor. And then I began to ask some of my questions. And as I began to ask the questions that I had, Councilman May, in his frustration, or offended to me, said if you yield the floor back, I can move on. And I said, but I, you yielded the floor, I'm asking some questions. And, and that wasn't okay. And so, I'm just gonna say that at best, the things that we've written here are, like verify the ability to purchase said property. What is the definition of ability to purchase? I'm concerned, these people, and I'm not saying that loosely, whoever is occupying these properties, are, is not, their water bills are not even current. So, there's a payment here, what's your point of information?
Do you know that to be a fact?
I do know it to be a fact. I, I'm talking about.
On every property.
Councilman May, your answer, your question has been answered. So, I went and sat down with Ms. um, Kathy, down in the water department. And so I di, I didn't stop my timer, you guys, just so you know, my timer's on. But the que, the concern that I have is this, you can look at it any way you want to. There are people that have balances over a thousand dollars, some under a thousand dollars. So when you say, the ab, what is your point of information?
Should they lose their house, cause they got a water bill, in your opinion?
Councilman May, that's not what I'm saying.
I'm just asking.
But when you look at the ability to purchase a property, if Councilman May will allow me to finish. If you have someone living in a house since December of two thousand seventeen, they haven't paid any property taxes, they haven't paid any mortgage, they haven't paid any rent. And when you look at the fact that all of those aspects of a property, which is part of homeownership, are taken away, and yet these water bills are not up to date, it says to me, can somebody actually? And I'm just talking about me. When you go to buy a house, they looking at certain things, income requirements. Can you pay everything on time? And so if you look at people that are living in a property that is on the liability of the city, and they don't have their water bills at least paid down, we as a council put together, you can pay your current and ten percent. That was not for lifetime. It was denoted so that in ten months, if you did what this council put in place, after ten months, you should be current. There should be zero.
Point of information.
And then, what's your point of information, Councilman May?
You spending all this time in the policy, say we gonna look to see if it's current. Do you see that in the policy?
I'm talking about the reason for my vote, which is what I'm supposed to do. But of course, you don't like what I'm saying, and I let you speak, nobody interrupted you. I'd like the same respect. What's your point of information?
Are you saying it's wrong for me to ask a clarifying question? Is you, is you punishing me for saying point of information?
Except you're just trying to break up my thought.
In your mind.
But thank you, you do it all the time. And so, I'm saying, whenever you have discussion, people, it is to say why you stand on one side of a view or not. And so, all I'm saying is, if we're looking at the affordability of a property, and the whole idea, and I love the idea, the whole idea is to put a house in somebody's hands, so that they can become a property taxpayer, which increases our revenue, increases homeownership, and gives people freedom to not be renting. So the idea, I love it. But when I look at the very concept, and these houses have been in our possession, you guys, for sixteen months. After sixteen months, a water bill should be paid.
to, to the people that are in the houses. What does that quick deed look like? How is the price associated with it? Um, well, quick deed comes with a price normally. Like, how much do they pay to get the quick deed?
I think that's part of what we're, what we're gonna determine.
Right, and it's, and, and so that, and, and so just for me, I'm, I'm not speaking to my colleagues, um...
But the, the point is for us not to keep the house and take it off of the city's roll, so we're not liable.
Right, but if we, if we're, if we're taking it off the city's roll, that means that we should have a value before. If it's this dollar, it doesn't make sense. I will say that my concerns, um, no, I didn't start researching it because I wasn't one of the original ones. But eventually, when this policy came before me, and finally there was something in writing, although we've held these houses since seventeen, there wasn't paper. And when there was paper, I did try to take the opportunity, um, to ask some questions. And if anybody goes back to the meeting, it was about a month ago, and Councilman Mayes yielded the floor, and then I began to ask some of my questions, and as I began to ask the questions that I had, Councilman Mayes, in his frustration or offended to me, said if you yield the floor back, I can move on. And I said, but I, you yielded the floor, I'm asking some questions. And, and that wasn't okay. And so I'm just gonna say that at best, the things that we've written here are, like verify the ability to purchase said property. What is the definition of ability to purchase? I'm concerned, these people, and I'm not saying that loosely, whoever is occupying these properties are, is not, their water bills are not even current. So, there's a payment here. What's your point of information?
Do you know that to be a fact?
I do know it to be a fact.
On every property.
I, I'm talking about the reason I looked at. Councilman Mayes, your answer, your question has been answered. So, I went and sat down with Ms. Kathy down in the water department, and so I di, I didn't stop my time, you guys, just so you know, my timer's on. But the que, the concern that I have is this, you can look at it any way you want to. There are people that have balances over a thousand dollars, some under a thousand dollars. So, when you say the ab, what is your point of information?
Should they lose their house 'cause they got a water bill, in your opinion?
Councilman Mayes, that's not what I'm saying.
I'm just asking.
But when you look at the ability to purchase a property, if Councilman Mayes will allow me to finish, if you have someone living in a house since December of two thousand seventeen, they haven't paid any property taxes, they haven't paid any mortgage, they haven't paid any rent, and when you look at the fact that all of those aspects of a property, which is part of homeownership, are taken away, and yet these water bills are not up to date, it says to me, can somebody actually, and I'm just talking about me, when you go to buy a house, they looking at certain things, income requirements, can you pay everything on time? And so if you look at people that are living in a property that is on the liability of the city, and they don't have their water bills at least paid down, we as a council put together, you can pay your current and ten percent. That was not for lifetime. It was denoted so that in ten months, if you did what this council put in place, after ten months, you should be current. There should be zero. And then, what's your point of information, Councilman Mayes?
You spending all this time in the policy, say we gonna look to see if it's current. Do you see that in the policy?
I'm talking about the reason for my vote, which is what I'm supposed to do. But of course, you don't like what I'm saying, and I let you speak. Nobody interrupted you. I'd like the same respect.
Point of information. Are you saying it's wrong for me to ask a clarifying question? Is you, is you punishing me for saying point of information?
Except you're just trying to break up my thought.
In your mind.
But thank you, you do it all the time. And so I'm saying, whenever you have discussion, people, it is to say why you stand on one side of a view or not. And so all I'm saying is, if we're looking at the affordability of a property, and the whole idea, and I love the idea, the whole idea is to put a house in somebody's hands, so that they can become a property taxpayer, which increases our revenue, increases homeownership, and gives people freedom to not be renting. So, the idea, I love it. But when I look at the very concept, and these houses have been in our possession, you guys, for sixteen months. After sixteen months, a water bill should be paid up in full if they were doing the current and ten percent. After ten months, that water bill would be paid in full. I'm not saying people should lose their houses if they can't pay their water bill. I'm just saying, it doesn't say to me that you can really afford property taxes once that's added to your plate, if it gets, but that's just me. And so, um, Ms. Wheeler, you wanted to say something, please feel free to. And I got about two more minutes, just in case anybody wants to know. Thank you.
I was gonna say specifically with regard to the, the water bill, um, there is provision in the policy, says the water bill must be current. Any owner and occupant shall sign the Declaration of Occupancy, and in fact will be responsible for any outstanding water and pay a current bill plus ten percent of the arrears. So, there is a, on that particular provision, there is a provision in the policy.
There is, Ms. Wheeler, and also for the record, I sent Mr. Um, Attorney Millhouse, because he's the attorney that's been working on it. Because, and I didn't bring my book, but I went down, and there, there are a couple of homeowners that have water bills on certain properties just since December of seventeen. And so the concern is, you got one person that started out with water, and then they're not there anymore, and somebody else started a new water bill in two thousand and eighteen. And that happened on about five properties that I looked up, until it became so confusing that I went and sat down with Kathy. And so, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying...
Madam Chair.
That my concern for it. What's your point of information?
Through you to Ms. Wheeler. Can you answer her?
Councilman Mayes, you don't get to do a point of order to take the floor from me. I see Ms...
This is a point of information.
It is.
You doing it, and you just give up the floor, and so I'm doing the same thing you just did.
Councilman Mayes, I didn't. I said I had two minutes left when Ms. Wheeler started talking.
So, you on your second?
I am.
You didn't ask, was it anybody before you just got there?
Actually, I'm not on my second.
Well, which one? I'm doing the same thing you doing. I'm doing a point of information through you to Ms. Wheeler. What's the problem?
You don't get to do a point of information to Ms. Wheeler when I have the floor.
You did. You said you were done, and then you said Ms. Wheeler had the floor.
No, I didn't. I said I have two minutes left, and actually I didn't, Mr. Mayes.
Whenever I can, I'll raise my hand and just say it.
Councilman Mayes, you, Ms. Wheeler, go ahead, please. Did you have something that you want to say?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Mayes, you have fifty-two seconds.
Um, Ms. Wheeler, I don't need you to say this to Ms. Galloway, but I want you to say it to every other council member. You hearing me, Ms. Wheeler?
Pardon?
I want you to say this to every other council member except for Ms. Galloway, 'cause she don't wanna hear it from me. Um, we got the policy in there about water bills being current. That's covered. Just read it, it's there. That ain't, shouldn't hold nothing up. Secondly, once we go out and negotiate prices, they come back to council for approval. So, that's in there. The policy, you had, every issue that you raised, Ms. Galloway, is addressed. You just got to know and comprehend what you read. Current water bills is addressed. And then the price, once it's negotiated, it don't write the quick claim deed and sell it without coming back before the council. Council will know every price on every property and have to approve it. This is approving the policy, and the sale comes back for final approval. And if I got twelve seconds left, I'm ready to vote and move this on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayes.
But I'm not gonna be voting to postpone.
Mr. Mayes, you're kind of...
Don't thank me, let me finish my fifty-two seconds.
You already did. You heard the timer go off. Thank you.
I did not hear it. Excuse me.
I really want to discuss this when it goes back to committee, but, uh, once again, and I've had a couple of people say to me, where is the incentive for anybody in the city who's a property owner to pay their taxes? If they just don't pay their taxes, and we just give it back to them, uh, you know, once it forecloses, uh, that there is no incentive to pay your property taxes.
What's your point of information?
Do Ms. Fields understand it's hundreds of, we talking ten or twenty a year?
Thank you, Mr. Mayes.
Everybody should pay their taxes.
Ms., go ahead, Ms. Fields.
I believe that any policy or rule of law or whatever that this council does should be the same for every resident in the city. Every resident in the city. And to me, since the, uh, tax program has the ability to, um, if you're late on your taxes, you can work with the county, and they give you an extra year to help get caught up. But you still have to pay that next year coming up and up, and, and I don't see that these people did that. So, if, if, I don't see why only the chosen few, and how these few were chosen. Basically, I think, I, I'm, I don't remember exactly, but I think one council person personally chose these houses.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Wasn't in fact, you hear, Ms. Fields, when we said each and every council person pick out in their ward, you chose not to do nothing, didn't you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayes. Go ahead, Ms. Fields.
One person, one council person personally chose these properties, and I just don't think that's fair across the board to the rest of the property owners and residents in this city to, you know, let them not pay their property taxes, not work with the county to get caught up, then have these problems with the water, not get caught up with that. I think there's a reason why these people have lost these homes. And while we do wanna help people, I don't think this policy is actually going to help people, and I think it's very unfair to the rest of the residents of the city who pay their taxes.
Ms. F, Ms. Wheeler, and then Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I think, um, if you look back at the origin of this policy, part of that was because of the land bank and what they were doing originally to work with folks who were property, property, um, they already started working with them prior to the, um, property transferring over, or ownership transferring over. So, I think that's something that's just important to remember. It wasn't people who had actually lost the property yet, it was people who, the tenants. The tenants, and that's why a lot of the folks who came over, they already had, um, land contracts. So, they were, they were actually the tenants who, it was actually the tenants who, um, we were trying to work with, um, on those. So, I just want you to remember a little bit in regard to that.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Through you to Ms. Wheeler. Also, do you remember the explanation that the city gets no money when it go from the county to the land bank? If we get a thousand dollars or more than what we get, do you remember that explanation?
Not actually.
I do, if I may.
Actually...
Point of information. Do anybody sitting here at this table remember when Deb Cherry explained?
Thank you, Mr. Mayes.
Let me finish my point of information.
Councilman Mayes, you, you, your point of information is, is becoming a dialogue.
Whatever it is, it's a quick inquiry.
He said yes. He, Mr. President said yes.
But, but he didn't say nothing. You interrupted. He didn't say nothing.
Mr. Mayes, you have the floor.
Point of information is always uninterrupted.
What's your point of information?
Uninterrupted. Do anybody remember when they said we wouldn't get no money, the land bank would get money, and the, our county would, and we would, in reference to that?
Did you wanna say it for the record, Mr. President?
Yes, I remember.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say this. The city took position, uh, possession of these properties correctly. They are liability right at this time?
They are.
I would highly recommend this body move this over to council and let's dispose of them soon as possible. Let this probably be a lesson, whether good or bad, whether it could work or not. We done stepped in it because we don't wanna get caught up in some more liability. We here now, let's get her done, and see what happens. And hopefully laziness as a resident, it's not an excuse 'cause everybody's struggling. People now gotta double down and take care of business. You're absolutely correct. If you're in the, if you're just living without rent, you should be able to pay your house, no, 'cause the seniors doing it on fixed income. But people done lost their house, and you absolutely right, Ms. Fields, that Deb Cherry will give you opportunity to redeem your prop, uh, property. Step forward is one of them opportunities. This is a second chance. If they lose them this time, we done with this program. I will not support it again. So, now that we have liability of it, let's dispose of them and see, and if it's a good program, let's keep it on the table, if it'll help people. But it is programs out there. Over at the treasury, call, step forward. Ain't no excuse, three years delinquent and property tax. Keep your house, pay your taxes. Don't make people, like you said, you should not be just land back, I lose my house, they gonna get right back to me. That is not a plan. That's a plan for failure. So, I highly support us moving it to council, and let's dispose of them, get it off of us, and let's keep doing business, and I'm done. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Just so you know, Ms., there's, the motion on the floor is, um, to postpone it. So, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those that oppose. So, it is Fields, and so is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mayes?
I would make a motion to move one eight zero six two seven to council for approval.
There's a motion on the floor for approval. Mr. Davis?
I'm Chair Secretary.
It's been moved the second. Is there a discussion, Ms. Fields?
Mr. Davis, I appreciate, and I hear what you said, okay? This is, they are currently a liability. This was an ill-conceived, um, idea in the beginning, in my opinion, okay? I know many on council were new, uh, to council and new to a lot of this, how things work, uh, at the time, and they voted for it. I think it's been clear that this has created more problems than anybody's helped. So, uh, I will actually support moving this to council and let's deal with it. Let's get this liability, and it is proven to be a liability. We are not prepared, we, we were told clearly by planning and development, that handles all kinds of things, by legal, that, you know, we weren't set up to do a program like this. We need to actually have a program in place that handles all the appraisals and the liability and, you know, and people who are assigned to handle that work before we attempt to just arbitrarily pull some properties out of the foreclosure lift. So, I'll support this going to council. I'm with you. Let's, let's get these, the liability off the city's hands if possible, and remember this, and hopefully council doesn't vote for this again.
Mr. Mayes?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and to the public, we got the liability off of us somewhat. We took out a blanket insurance policy, and we covered. Um, this liability that they referring to isn't sit there in front of this council for months. You got people leave committee meetings, they ain't here, meetings adjourned for lack of a form.
Point of order. What's your point of order?
Mr. Mayes is not germane to the motion.
He's not. Mr. Mayes?
I say I am, and if you rule I'm not, I'm gonna appeal you. This conversation is germane. It's Tito, Jackie, and Marlon. So, you ruling I ain't germane?
Go ahead, Ms. Mayes.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Fields don't want me to be germane, because she don't want me to address that a quick claim deed could have already been transferred. And it wasn't ill-conceived. The county came over and say, if three million dollars' worth of taxes, Ms. Wheeler, go over to the county, and they come across the street and pay two million, if there's a million left, if there's a million left, they reach over in two thousand and twenty, on the front end of our taxes, pop and balance their books. Every time we got to leave with taxes, they reach over in the next upcoming year and balance their books. Then they give them to the land bank for free, and the land bank sell them for the back taxes and get all the money. The only entity ain't getting a dime is the city of plenty. It wasn't ill-conceived. I said if we get ten and sell them for a thousand apiece, we make ten thousand more than we used to get by just setting idle, letting the land bank do everything, and the county treasurer. We got one that wanna pay us ten thousand now. That's what they owe. We got people willing to pay three thousand. That's what they owe. So, we ain't even got to that point yet, but these naysayers who didn't want us to help people, we agreed twenty a year. I encourage everybody to pay their taxes, because you might not be one of twenty. You know how we got the seven we got last year, Mr. Hall, and the eight we got this year? I said to this whole council, look in your ward, and look on the list, 'cause they give us a list every year, about July, August, October. Look in your ward, knock on doors, and see if it's any one or two people who you might wanna help. Two years, ain't none of them did it. One council person did it. It was me. And that's how we got these properties. We calling it a pilot project, then I shut the door with the mayor and Mr. Gilchrist, and the land bank, and the, and the county treasurer. And we agreed up on a figure of twenty. No more than twenty until we meet again and change it. So, don't buy into the poppycock that it's gonna make people not pay their taxes. I'm gonna pay mine. I wouldn't take a chance on this little program. Now, when we hand property back, it should be a good day. Five of them, if it's a police officer, one of them baker, if it's a police officer get hired at a sub minute, substandard rate, and we wanna police in the first ward, want one in the second ward, we can give them houses and supplement their salaries, and have them in the community. If we wanna give them to somebody, a homeowner, or a first-time homeowner, we can invent that program. Housing is something that the city should be in. And if we can keep people in there, excuse me, Mr. Davis, rather than it getting tore up and stripped, we should keep people in there. So, housing is something Councilman Mayes gonna be involved with. Housing is something this council should be involved with, and it shouldn't take a rocket scientist to get five or six votes on housing. Housing is important. Thank you.
Ms. Wheeler, just for the record, so am I hearing you saying that before these properties are quick dated to anybody, the council will be involved? Is that correct?
Yes, the, the procurement policy requires...
They come back and vote now.
Okay. And then the other thing, I just want you to know what, and, and I know that, I'm asking you on the record because you're the attorney that's here, although I've been talking to Mr. Millhouse. Also, um, the right of first refusal, I'm, I'm going back on the record just so you know, to find out who owned the houses when they were lost, because technically the program is designed usually when you do a, uh, I always forget the term, right of first refusal. It should be extended to the person that lost the house at the time, generally. And so, if that's different, I just wanna make sure that you know that although I maybe wasn't part of it, I will be a part of it in going forward. So, that's all that I have. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of sending this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Any, um, that oppose? Any abstentions?
Show up, raise your hands, I'm asking. A division of the houses in...
All in favor of, um, moving it to council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. What's the next one?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Fields.
I would like to move one nine zero one three five to council.
Mr. Garrett?
I second that.
It's been moved the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Move to council.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Garrett?
I make a motion to send one nine zero one two six to council.
There's a motion to move one nine zero one two six to council. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second.
It's been moved the second. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mayes?
It was three appointments in committee. One has disappeared through you to Ms. Brown. Oh, we sent that one out. So, when these get out there, that'll be all three of the original ones, same names. Okay. I'll be supporting this.
Ms. Fields?
I see. Hold on.
I, I would just ask...
Councilman Mayes, I, just as soon as she's done, I'll give the floor back to you. Go, Ms. Fields.
I would just ask, is, uh, uh, Brandy Cook Brown here?
Yeah, he was. That's what I was fixing to do, call him.
Go ahead, Ms. Fields.
Okay. Uh, well, on this appointment and the one following, I just want to give the person an opportunity to stand up and be introduced to council, so...
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of sending this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose. Any abstentions? Ms. Chair?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Garrett?
I make a motion to send one nine zero one two eight to council.
There's a motion to move one nine zero one two eight to council. Is there a second? Mr. Davis?
I'm Chair Secretary.
This is gonna move the second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr....
I believe what the new resolution that Mr. Grant has, the wrong date is on there. It's 2004. It should indicate that...
Are you talking about the resolution that we're on the appointment right now? Okay.
It should indicate 2004, which he has that one. However, she continued to serve after 2004. So, what I would like to recommend, so that we can push these through, because they've been built up quite a while, is that if we could make this a point, a point two.
Number one?
Number one would be the one he's giving you now, point one. The one on the floor where you would add and continue to serve.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Can, can we do that now? And then that's what I want to do. So, the point one ain't been done yet. Madam Chair?
Mr. Mayes?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to, um, do amended motion as it relates to this appointment of Jonathan Hartman on the, um, downtown development authority. We've had passed out to us a... We've had passed out to us a add-on resolution that seemed to be a little different from, um, the original resolution. So I'm gonna first ask that, I'm gonna do a motion that we make this add-on resolution for Jonathan Hartman's appointment. One nine zero one two eight, point one. And I would, um, ask that, um, this be, this amendment be accepted, changed, and, um, that's what I'm moving right now that we make this add-on with the proper changes, a, um, one nine zero one two eight point one is passed out and in our hands.
But the point two was in Congress, Ms. May.
I'm gonna do that after this, yeah.
Mr. Garrett?
I second that motion.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of making this one nine zero, amending this to one nine zero one two eight point one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Motion, Chair. Madam Chair.
Mr. May?
Through you to Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown, what part of this resolutions needs to change in order for us to make it a now a point two?
Uh, after the two thousand four, you would indicate however she continued to serve.
So where's the two thousand and four and what paragraph? The first paragraph?
First paragraph.
So it reads Barbara Beasley's term expired in December two thousand and one but continued to serve until March two thousand and four?
Well, actually, two thousand one should be in there, I assume two thousand one should not be in there.
So we scratched two thousand and one out?
Expired in two thousand four.
So.
However she continued.
So, so it should say Barbara Beasley's term expired, um, and she could, but she continued to serve until March of two thousand four?
Barbara Beasley's term expired March two thousand four, however she continued to serve.
Okay, so it didn't expire until March of two thousand four? So you want, um, the turn, the letters, the words, "in December two thousand and one" but continued to serve until struck?
It's, uh, it's, it's expired in March two thousand four.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. On this resolution, it expired March two thousand and four. So we striking the word "in" December two thousand one but continued to serve until. Those words are struck, so it'll read Barbara Beasley's term expired March two thousand and four. Now, what do we put after? So we put however after two thousand and four. So I'm gonna put a comma after the four and I'm gonna put however. However, and then I'm gonna put a comma. She continued to serve. She continued. Continued to serve. And then after continued and served, Ms. Brown, it go back to them little marks in the hand. So this is the proposed amended. Um, Madam Chair, I move to amend one nine zero one two eight point one to one nine zero one two eight point two. And the changes would be in the first paragraph whereas striking out the words "in December two thousand and one" but continued to serve until. And then adding after March two thousand and four, comma, however, comma, she continued to serve. And then everything else would be the same, and I so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
I second that motion.
It's been moved to second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, or, or Mr. Griggs?
Uh, Mr. Hartman lived in, does anybody know? Four oh two East Third, got it, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of?
No, that, oh, no, excuse me, that's the address.
Mr. Wait, this is to, um, amend the, um, to amend, we haven't even sent it to council yet.
But my question didn't get answered. Uh, that's the address of Factory Two.
Mr. Griggs?
I just asked a question.
You will, you will, you will. But, um. All in favor of the amending this resolution to point two, say aye. Those that oppose? It, it is amended to one nine zero one two eight point two, Mr. May?
Madam Chair, I would, um, move that we send one nine zero one two eight point two to council.
There's a motion on the floor?
I didn't make that motion.
For approval.
Thought I made that motion before we amended it.
You, you, you can't make, you can't make it until it's amended. There was a motion that was on the floor that was never disposed of.
Okay.
So we'll have to make sure that we dispose of it.
Well, we amended, it was, we amended. It's been disposed of with the amended.
So you made a, um, okay, I didn't hear the, okay. So, Mr. Um, Winfrey?
I second that motion.
It's been moved to second, is, you hear that, it's been moved to second, Mr. Winfrey. And so did you have a question now, Mr. Griggs?
Uh, I just asked if Mr. Hartman lived in Flint. That address is, I believe, uh, for Factory Two.
Is Mr. Hartman here? He, he's, he, is that his address, four oh two East Third? That's downtown Flint?
He lived inside Factory Two?
I don't know where Factory Two is, but that's.
Yeah, he was, he say Factory Two, but, you know.
Yeah, so, any, um, further discussion? Hearing none, oh.
Oh, not on this.
All in favor of sending this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, any abstentions?
Madam Chair.
That passes, Mr. May?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn special affair.
Nope.
Nope.
Point of order, I move to adjourn special affair.
We, uh, we.
We change the agenda.
Point of order, you got the answers there, a second.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I, I second that motion.
It's been moved to second it, all in favor of adjourn the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? Ms. Fields?
Okay, I have, uh, a couple of referrals. Uh, one, I would like, um, to put as a special order on the next finance committee meeting, a discussion that we need to enter into, uh, we need to start preparing for an RFP for an auditor for two thousand and twenty. I'll refer council, you can read section three dash four oh four. City council is in charge of hiring auditors and it normally takes a year. They're engaged through two thousand and nineteen, but, uh, we need to start preparing for two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so you got that, is it?
A special, okay, and I also, I'd like to make a referral. I would like a copy of the, a written, a written report on the economic development strategy that was devised with the three million dollars from the Kellogg Foundation. And I would also like a printout, Mr. Branch, I don't know if we have a finance person here, of, um, a grants activity report from the beginning till now of that particular grant. Okay, so those are two referrals.
Thank you.
And then, um, let's see. I would like to ask the city attorney if they can do anything. I am hearing reports that the Ethics and Accountability Board is going into closed session, executive session, and they don't seem to have an understanding of how to do that legally and when they may do that. So I would ask if perhaps the law office could give them some additional training or assistance on that because ultimately I don't wanna get sued 'cause they're illegally going into executive session. Okay, and then, let's see, uh, the last thing. I would like to make a motion that city council receive the full audit report of two thousand and eighteen from Yo and Yo, including the procurement card supplemental report as well as a full printout of the two thousand and eighteen P-card activity.
So there's a motion on the floor, is that second?
I second that.
The floor has moved to second it, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. May?
Yeah, I won't be voting for this in special affairs. This is committee meeting stuff, that's why I moved to adjourn. We come from four thirty to five thirty to touch up a few things. Ms. Fields, they'll do this in every meeting, then at the end, just keep watching, they gone. That's why they don't, in my opinion, wanna wait to the end when it's other business and regular time to do it. They do this stuff early and then they leave. I'll deal with this in finance committee meeting. And that's where it's at. This ain't no council committee meeting for all of this mess. I won't be voting in favor of this. We in a motion now on something that could be done out there. It's after five thirty, this is happening repeatedly for whatever reason. I won't be to blame, I'm gonna keep making motions to adjourn sooner than later. So, I know this game. I'll just be voting no in principle 'cause it didn't have to be done. I mean, the FBI, I seen. Letters to the governor and attorney generals about audit. Allegations that the mayor and me and others done mismanaged hundreds of millions of dollars. We had an investigative hearing with subpoenas. Subpoenaed the gov- Kate Fields and even them went here. I make a motion, I second, I make a motion, I second. That's why I call y'all not a FAFI. We should be out there, the FAFI voted not to adjourn so she could make more allegations and inquiries or whatever. Believe me, politically, I ain't gonna do it. The FAFI, y'all can do it, I remember the old FAFI. People were looking at these votes and motions, the proper place, Ms. Fields.
What's your point of information, Mr. Griggs?
Does Mr. May realize that those two public hearings with subpoenas failed and they were wasted?
No, I don't realize that. Let me say this, Mr. Griggs, you wasn't there, so you didn't realize it, I know that. If I realized it, I was that.
I was wasted.
My point of order, Madam Chair, won his butt.
I did, thank you.
Because if he wanna get my attention, you got it. Now, if he wanna address me and argue with me, away to get the flow, I'm all for it, Mr. Griggs. You wasn't there. That's why you don't know if they succeeded or failed, you wasn't there, you was absent. You was too busy writing, in my opinion, an illegal letter with Kate Fields and Worthen. You want me to pull it out to the Attorney General? Talking about y'all want a meeting with Dana Nessel and the governor? And they ain't gave you a meeting yet. Trying to get some folks in trouble. No, they didn't fail. Want me to tell you what happened? You voted to wrongfully remove me from finance chair in the middle of my one-year term. We in court and the hearings wasn't posted to continue. The subpoenas that was ordered for the governor didn't go to circuit court. I ordered and asked the city attorney to file a motion to enforce a subpoena against Snyder. I subpoenaed him and Elijah Cummings in Washington subpoenaed him. I subpoenaed Rich Baird and Amy Eppke from the MDEQ. This is no joke with Councilman May's councilperson, Griggs. No, the housing pro- you can't stay quiet, can you? The housing program ain't failed, these subpoenas ain't all the way failed, but you and Eva Worthen writing that letter might be getting ready to fail. Yeah, man.
Madam Chair. The governor failed those two hearings, not city council. The governor said they were waste.
So there is a motion, um, on the floor to make the audit results, um, available and including the P-card. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, it's very disheartening to hear all of this laundry list of, I don't know, even know the purpose of it, but, um, obviously it's elect- it's election coming. Uh, my constituents bogged me down today with all kinds of, uh, personal stuff files, cleanup, all the way down to restoration. I have zero interest in none of what I just heard. Mr. Neely is running for, I'm hearing, for mayor. It ain't my pleasure to go and dig up none of that audit or switch auditors at this time. I know you can frown, but I, I wanna put it on record.
No, no, no.
I have zero interest.
I'm just listening, no.
No, okay, I understand. I have zero interest of bargaining down the secretaries or nobody else 'cause I have, all my hands is full at this time with these complaints of constituent. I notice, Ms. Field, my colleague, unless her ward, I've been down her ward, it's similar to my ward. None of your constituent, uh, uh, is this your constituents concerned to wanna have all of these P-cards and all this other what-have-you documents? This, this body is clear, we already got a lawsuit pending because of back-bobbing, I'm just frustrated because unless Mr. Garrett or Ms. Grig- Mr. Griggs or somebody need this material, or does one council person want these kinda documents? I mean, this ain't the first time I heard of this. A pile of documents, a whole tree, I always say, worth of documents. This is unnecessary burden on the men- I mean, on the, on the council office. And I'm done, I yield the floor.
Ms. Worthen? It's, uh, not the council office that's gonna do this, it's Yo and Yo that would release the report, which is for council. We control this, we should be able to see the results. I, I don't understand why anyone would say, let's not look at the results of an audit. That is our job as a councilperson. Uh, I'll be.
Point of information. Madam Chair, my colleague aware, I have the audit and I was in the audit and I never missed a nail or nail day here, I have all of that documents and I'm done.
Mr.?
Yeah, I was just thinking, when we say that, that the audit, uh, we are, the auditors always come every year and do a, do a, uh, audit with us and provide us information. And if there are things that you want, why not just call them and tell them what things you want? And then why everybody go to council?
Tell them why. Um, Ms. Fields, you have just one minute.
Uh, I would like to tell President Winfrey that, uh, I have tried to contact the auditors, um, but the law office apparently thinks, uh, I don't have the right to do that. And this is about a specific supplemental report that's part of the audit. And that is a procurement card report that needs to be made public. Uh, I can't read the email because Ms. Wheeler put it's confidential and privileged, so I can't bring the email. But I think council has the right to see absolutely in that audit since clearly Charter section three dash four oh four, the auditors serve at the will of council, not the administration. We hire them, compensate them, it even says the mayor doesn't even have the right to review. So I think it's pretty clear that we have the right to see every bit of the audit report. And that's what I'm asking for because we can't do our job unless we see
Point of information.
All these financial documents.
What's your point of information, Mr. May?
She can say she can't do her job, she can't speak for we on me.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Thank you.
Um.
Madam Chair, the, uh, uh, state attorney general recommended the audit, if I remember correctly, in response to that ill-fated letter.
So I just wanna, I don't, what's your?
Point of information, he said in response to what letter? What did he describe it, what did he say on record?
It's kinda deep.
He said ill-fated, did I hear you say ill-fated letter you signed the law?
So, so I just wanna, Ms. Wheeler, um, I'm gonna give you the opportunity, but, um, I'm concerned that, I'm, I'm trying to understand why a motion is necessary um, because according to our charter in section three dash four oh five under conduct of audit, D and E, it says each audit and report supplemental thereto shall be made public in the manner determined by the city council. And copies of the audit shall be placed in the office of the city clerk. E, all City of Flint financial records, accountings and audits and other reports shall be public records available for inspection. A statement of all revenues and expenditures of public money shall be published and distributed as required by state law. One of the things that anybody will know is when we were given our, um, audit results by, um, Yo and Yo and Mr. Newsom was here, the P-cards came up. And he said that the P-cards could be, um, requested. I have not seen that, that happen. And so I would, I, I would hate to support the motion because I would hope that based on our charter, which is the law, we would have access to that with no way. So for me, this motion is in line with what the charter says. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Um, Wheeler.
Um, Councilwoman Fields took it upon herself to say what the law department said email regarding Ms. Wheeler. The, the emails speak for themselves, okay? And the reason why I had to intervene was because councilperson Fields was intimidating the city's au- au- auditor. And I take, I take that very seriously. Don't ask questions.
Go ahead, Aunt Eva, please.
And I would ask that the council should be held to conduct themselves as anybody else in this audience that works for the city would be without blurring out. that works through a city booth without blurring out while something is being said. And it's still happening.
So is there any other?
And I'm done.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Hannah, I'm sorry.
I'm just asking for that to be addressed, because I'm not, I shouldn't be doing it.
So do you want the emails to be released? I mean, because I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I mean, can the, are the emails public record so that this intimidating the person from Yo and Yo can be identified?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because what's in the emails was not something that was privileged, it was something that came from councilperson Fields who decided to intimidate the auditor, and as a result of that, I had to intervene. And when I did, I told councilperson Fields that I would provide her that information. When you have somebody who works on behalf of the city in your favor, and they simply say, I need to reach out to the city attorney and I'll follow up with you, that is simply it. And matter of fact, the information that's been provided is information that's already been provided to the public through Freedom of Information Act request that was made by a member of the public. So, like I said, it should be okay for people to ask questions without them having their fear that they will refer this question to the state Attorney General or the, to the state treasurer because they didn't get the answer immediately. So, like I said, I think it should, is very important to, to have the record reflect the truth of what happened.
Uh, Ms. Worthing?
So it's?
I did not, Ms. Worthing, go, please.
So it's fair for Ms. Wheeler to tell her side of the story, but illegal and unfair for Ms. Fields to state her side? I, I don't understand the intimidation by her own city attorney. Uh, Ms. Wheeler, where's the P-card report then, if we're allowed to have it?
It's in my office.
Okay, I would like a copy right now, please.
Okay, so there's, so there's a motion on the floor to make the, is there any, Mr. May?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Please.
When you got, Mr. Griggs called it an ill-fated letter, if I'm not mistaken. That's what she doing. She misinterpreting the answer from the treasurer, in my opinion. The treasurer's letter talked about, and it's a public letter.
Point of information.
Yes.
Are you aware that she's not talking about?
I'm aware of what Ms. Wheeler talking about, that she wanted the council to address, that I'm not finna ignore. And I'm gonna address it in my own way if I may.
I'm sorry, I was, I, I just need a clarity. Go ahead.
If you listen, it'll be crystal clear hopefully, but you never can get it if you interrupt. I watched the meeting Sunday, all the interruptions, Ms. Delaware, I watched it, go watch. When we get to floor, we ain't kids, we grown councilpersons. I know what Ms. Wheeler said. Beg your pardon?
No, sir, go ahead.
You said something. We, I'm grown, sixty, be sixty-one in September, elected, good number. Ms. Fields, in these letters that he describing as ill-fated, dealing with Yo and Yo and the treasurer, she ain't getting answers she want, and she seem to be pushing. Y'all the one accused me of intimidating y'all because I say point of information, point of order. I take that case every day of the week. It ain't intimidating if folks don't know council rules. Y'all can call it harassing women, I say these women on this council don't understand the rules. And if you intimidated by me saying point of information, point of order, and then talking about it, learn the rules. She ain't knew the rules. She in a box in a corner, getting sued, trying to not get information from Yo and Yo. Didn't intend to investigative hearing, he calling it an ill-fated letter. It's been a lot of ill-fated witch hunt type stuff. I call them witch hunts, intimidation. The postponement of the bullying and intimidation ordinance, you clapping for me? Oh, I didn't know, I thought you were clapping, saying I was saying something good. I just was looking, I didn't know what that was. But the point is that you were just doing this, man, I thought you were clapping. I didn't know, I watch people when I talk. But my position is this, I'm not gonna vote yes, I'm gonna be voting no. And I'm gonna be voting no because when Ms. Fields and Ms. Worthing, who made the motion and seconded, start coming to Finance Committee meeting, coming to governmental aspirations meeting, then I'll support the inquiry. I got no problem with inquiry, that's what we do. But I won't support it where you miss the proper meetings, miss the investigative hearings, and then run in here and waste all this time in special affairs with all these motions that she panicking on, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. She can get it. We might give it to her, but this ain't the time. This ain't the time. I'm telling you, I got litigation. I'll subpoena it and give it to her. But this ain't the time, and they done messed up. And now she trying to cover up, and every time y'all condone her against this administration, y'all seem to be a part of. I'm not gonna support they ill-fated stuff, I'm not gonna support they witch hunt. I'm gonna see if they get their attendance up. She had over forty or fifty. And Eva and Griggs leave right with her. Check the record. So I can't vote for this. We should be out of here. As soon as this motion fail or pass, I'm ready to go and start the meeting. We should have been in an hour and a half ago. This is getting ridiculous.
Any further discussion, Ms. Fields?
I just want to make sure that the chair understands that not only do I want the auditor supplemental report on procurement cards, I also asked for a detailed printout of total use of P-cards in 2018.
Point of information. That's all in this motion? I would say, I didn't know all that was in this motion. I really ain't voting for it now. If she telling me all that is in this motion, that's my point of information. No, I ain't heard that.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. So, all in favor of supporting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? So if, if, it passes?
Point, point of order.
What's your point?
Division. Let's state the number so the secretary can record the people. I ask for a raise of hands.
All in favor of getting the documents, say aye. Those that oppose, wonderful. Mr. Garrett?
I just wanted to see where we were. I made a referral a while back, I'd like to remake that referral to you to see where we are in the status of the new police cruisers for the city of Flint Police Department. And if possible, if anybody in the administration can get a contact number for the fleet manager? I don't know who's in charge of that, but can send me that number. Like to resend that referral, because those police cruisers are.
Can you resend the motion? I mean, the referral?
All right, that's it.
And what's your pleasure?
To, uh, referral to?
No, we got that, now it's time.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Mr. Griggs, there's a second. All in favor of adjourn, say aye. Those that oppose, any abstentions? We are adjourned.